All right, it's 6:30, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. And at this time, I'm gonna call the meeting in order, and Mr. Johnson's gonna lead us in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we'll approve the consent agenda. Part of that consent agenda, we're gonna amend. The agenda, we're adding item F, which would be approve contract for Buster out. So part of the consent agenda, we'll make a motion, we'll include that addition to the agenda. So with that motion, I need approval, consent agenda items, including meeting agenda, November fund balance statement, minutes of the November 16th open meeting, payments on monthly bills, excluding payments to Cooper Lumber and Larry Vinson. Does anyone want to make that motion? Mr. Johnson makes the motion. Go ahead, a second. Troy makes the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Carry seven up. Next, need a motion to approve payments to Cooper Lumber and Larry Vinson? Does anyone wanna make that motion? Troy makes a motion. Michael, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Carries five oh and two exceptions. Next, we'll go into communications, the MSBA monthly board report.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the search for Missouri's new Commissioner of Education. During a special conference call on December 14th, the State Board of Education voted five to three to start accepting applications for the position of Commissioner of Education on December 15th, and close applications on January 8th, one day before the next regular meeting of the State Board of Education. The five members who voted for the accelerated timeline for accepting applications were all the recent appointees of Governor Greitens. State Board President Charlie Shields, Vice President Vic Lenz, and member Mike Jones voted against the motion and argued for a longer timeline and a more deliberate search process. Lenz said during the conference call, "Closing the application process on January 8th does not allow enough time for the State Board to get adequate input on the search."
I would tell you, it's a slap in the face to educators, it's a slap in the face to legislators, it's a slap in the face to executives over at the Governor's office if you ask for the application without having gotten their input before you do it, before you start the process even. It just doesn't make sense. It's not the way you would do a high-level application for a high-level job.
All five of the recent appointees to the State Board of Education still face confirmation by the Missouri Senate when it convenes for its 2018 session. Senators from both parties have expressed concerns about the apparent attempt by Governor Greitens to orchestrate the firing of former Commissioner Margie Van Neven on December 1st, putting those confirmations in jeopardy. The 2018 session of the General Assembly is upon us, and numerous education issues will once again be on the agenda for lawmakers, not the least of which is state funding for K-12 education. It will take a $98 million increase in the foundation formula to fully fund the basic state aid program for schools. $48 million of that would go toward new early childhood education funding triggered by a fully funded formula. MSBA Associate Executive Director for Advocacy Mike Reed says the budget will be challenging once again this year.
There're gonna be a lot of demands on the budget. A number of places are gonna be asking for increases in money, plus the fact that halfway through this year, this fiscal year, we have a tax decrease coming in. So there's a real question on how much funds will be available for the Chairman of the House Budget Committee and the Senate Budget Committee to work with. There'll be a lot more demands than we have appropriations available. And so that's gonna be really, really big topic for much of the year of where's the money gonna come from, and how are we gonna split it up?
Other issues likely to be considered once again in the General Assembly are expansion of charter schools throughout the state, and voucher schemes such as education savings accounts that funnel public money to private schools that are not accountable to the public. MSBA will keep you informed about legislative developments during the session through our weekly Legislative Voice newsletter, our Capital Watch video program, our daily updates on Twitter, and through critical issue alerts. And be sure to mark your calendar for the MSBA Legislative Forum Public Schools Day at the Capitol, scheduled for February 13th in Jefferson City. You can register for that event through the MSBA website. School Board members throughout the state will be honored for their work during the School Board Recognition Week, January 21st through 27th. It's a great opportunity for communities to honor local school board members who provide leadership to our local school districts throughout the state. Check the MSBA website for resources related to School Board Recognition Week. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Next, we'll have public comments. Mayor Norman is here to present to us.
Aaron, I forgot to make one of these for you. I left you out. Your dunker's out, we'll share. What I'm handing out is just a very preliminary. Very preliminary thing that's been done on a computer. In regard to a proposal down on the square. The proposal for changing the square a little bit came out of a committee of merchants down on the square is where that came from. And these things were done by, actually done by somebody in that committee. I don't think we got anybody on the city council to do that, but anyway, John Clutt presented it, and then came to the city and asked that if he presented that to SCOCOG, if that would be interfering in anything that the city had planned. And it didn't. SCOCOG is South Central Ozark Council of Governments, and they're located in West Plains, and almost all of our grants and everything the city does is administered by them and through them. So we pay dues, the county pays dues, and then we have representatives at the meetings. But SCOCOG will administer the grant if we end up doing it. The grant that we're looking at is called a Community Development Block Grant, and there are very specific ways these grants have to be done, of course, the city doesn't really know about that, but SCOCOG does. They'll administer the grant. And this, we're in very preliminary part of it. So the first thing was they presented, SCOCOG, SCOCOG asked us if we were interested in it. The council passed a resolution and said, yes, at this point, we're interested. Let's take the next step and see where we go with it. So then we pass that resolution, and the next, one of the next steps in there is you put out a request for resumes from engineers, and school goes through the same procedure when you gotta do something. And then you choose one. SCOCOG vets whoever it is you chooses, whoever it is you choose, they look to see that it's a reputable person, reputable firm. And then the engineer comes down, takes preliminary information from the city and from MoDOT. In this case, we've got two state highways that go around the square, one's business five and one's 14, and that includes all sides of the square. So you don't just go down the square and do something. If you've had dealings with MoDOT, you know that it doesn't work that way. So, believe it or not, our square is square. When we got down and measured it, I'd never paid any attention to it. I'd just driven around it for 50 years. So it is square, and what we, most of the time, MoDOT allows about 12 feet for a lane. At stop sign, well, we've got 40-some feet across there, so two lanes belong to MoDOT and about two lanes belong to the city. There's no agreement with MoDOT, there's not, you know, it's all just kind of a good old boys' deal. And they had gone in one time and milled all of the asphalt off the square and did that. I don't think I was a part of it, but I'm sure we had to pay for some of that. Anyway, in general terms, here's what's proposed at this point. And that is that we eliminate parking spaces in the middle, there are about 40, and if we fill up all in with grass, possibly take those red prepared trees out, which are decorative and not shade trees, and put three or four good-sized maple trees out in the middle for shade. You'd have a five-foot sidewalk, and this has to do ADA, our American Disabilities Act, and a five-foot sidewalk all the way around, all the way around it. And on all four corners, you'd have an access, an ADA access. Now also, right now, in order for someone in a wheelchair to get up to the gazebo, there's only one place in the square, and I'm glad they haven't been inspected because it's not ADA, doesn't meet the requirements. We've gone up to the curb and poured some asphalt, and you can kinda get out, you know. ADA requirements, they told us first by 2020 that we would have, the whole town would have to be ADA compliant, and there ain't any way in the world we can do that. We don't have enough money and all the bags probably to pay to do that. So the thinking was that we will start with the square, make it ADA, etc., make it more pedestrian-friendly, and then probably move south with another grant on sidewalks. And one of the reasons for going south is, I'm gonna put the new city hall there. One day, Art Corum said to me, he said, "What's the best way for me to walk from the radio station to city hall?" And I said, "Well, I don't know." So I got out and walked it, and you know, there wasn't a good way to walk. So I told him, "You're gonna have to walk in the road, it's the only safe way." But eventually, we'll do sidewalks going south up toward the new city hall. But the thought is to start at the square, and that's the proposal. So one of the big concerns was, what about parking? Well, as you know, I've been in business down on the square a long time, and I remember well when I was a kid, parking was an issue. Every single business was on the square. You double parked, you triple parked. You left it neutral and pulled the emergency on, just left it running, and if somebody needed it moved, they just got in it and moved it. Well, times changed, you don't need to double park anymore. And we checked it on busy court days, that sort of thing. It's still not a problem to park on the square. On court day, they'll tend to park over a little bit on the west side, on that corner, and maybe a little bit down the south, which still have people on the square who own businesses that park in front of it. So that's sometimes kind of a problem. But the parking, the parking part of it is not a real issue about taking the parking out of the middle. By the time we take the parking out of the middle, and we put parking all across the north side, see, that'll be closed, and all across the south, at this point, we eliminated only 16 parking spaces, and we think we'll get it down to 10. And parking, parking's not gonna, not gonna be the deal. So one of the things that's happened, and I didn't bring that list with me, but I'll give you, I remember some of them. We've had a lot of merchants leave the square. Our insurance agencies are gone, our banks are gone, Casey's gone, O'Reilly's gone, Health Department moved. And these are, I'm talking over the last 20 or 25 years, Health Departments moved, Vision Family Services is gone. And you say, "Well, what difference does that make?" Well, if I had a restaurant, I'd want all those people down on the square. So everything that moves away from the square takes people with it. And when that happens, the banks need to be where the businesses are. And of course, large stores put grocery stores out of business, but we used to have grocery stores down there. We have a total of over, we have a total of 20 or 21 business places that have moved from the square over the last 25 years, and you know they're still in business. They didn't go out of business. They moved, they moved. They moved out, out to the corner and out on Highway 5. So the question would be, why didn't they do that? Some of them moved out there because they needed to be in a high-traffic area. Sonic would be one, and Casey's would be one, and another one or two. But awful lot of them didn't need to be in a high-traffic area. They would've done well anywhere. So they wanted a newer place, they wanted a place more attractive, and we don't have that on the square. So do we think if we redo the square, that all the businesses are gonna come back and are gonna fill out? It's not gonna happen. But I might be more willing to buy a building on the square and redo it, either to sell it or to rent it, to get somebody in there, if the area down there was an attractive area. And it's just, in my opinion, I've gotten used to it. You know, I'm not saying it's ugly, but I've been places where the squares had work done on them, and they're very attractive. Now, there's another issue about ADA. And in there, and he had some things in there I wasn't familiar with, but when you, when you get down to a place that said "bowabouts," now this, this one picture gives you just kind of an idea from the side, how the change would be. And what that is, it's kinda hard to tell you with that drawing, but bless MoDOT's heart. Sue Wheeler got hit down there on the square going over through the building and on the west side. When that happened, she sued the state, she sued the city. The city was eventually dropped, but once that thing was settled, they came in there one day, and they drew all four of those crosswalks on the square. Now, if you've ever looked at them, they're silly. I mean, I looked at them, I went, "What in the world are they doing?" Well, they're covering their hind end, is what they were doing. But most of those, where they hit the sidewalk in front of the merchant, don't have access for a handicap to get up on the sidewalk, nor is there an access for them to get into the square. Now, there are eight of those accesses, all four corners, and maybe two of them have a proper access. One of them comes out to a telephone pole, one of them comes out to a fire hydrant. They just put them there, very few people use them. But these bowabouts, in places where you have a handicap parking space, you know, you've got the yellow lines here where you can't park, they're gonna take that and kinda curb that in, and it will be landscaped. This is at the square. Then you'll turn around, and you'll have one out here at the corner, say where the courthouse is there. And when you do that, you have two of those on each corner all the way around, you narrow down the lanes on the square. Not, not so much you can't turn, but it takes at least one lane out, and it slows the traffic down on the square, that's one thing it does. But the other thing it does is it cuts down the length of time that someone on a wheelchair will be exposed out in the traffic lanes while they're in that chair. So you've got about, oh, maybe, I'm gonna say five seconds worth of landscaping here and five here. It takes 10 seconds, it's 20-some seconds to go all the way across that, which is too, for ADA purposes, is too much. But those, these bowabouts or landscaped areas protect them until they get out in the middle, and it cuts down on that. That's what a bowabout is, I've never heard that. So the next thing I would say is, you'll say, "Well, why are you here?" I'm here because I called Dr. Dial and explained to him, explained to him that one of the requirements for this ADA grant is in preliminary stages that we get letters of support. And that's what I, that's what I'm here for, is to tell you in general terms what it is that the grant's about. And nothing's, what happens, I mean, it's real early on this grant, and it takes a while to get letters of support, so I started kinda early, but we're real early on it. We haven't had, we haven't had the initial diagrams and reports from the engineer. He, as you, as you know, in dealing with public things, prevailing wage is a big factor in the cost of whatever you do. He did take the things that he thought we were gonna do, looked at prevailing wage scales that are on the computer that the government provides, and the cost is somewhere around $300,000 for this. And that gives you an idea of how much money it's gonna take when we do sidewalk. But I'm gonna say a third of the cost of the work we do, 25% at least, is gonna be prevailing wage costs, which I kinda hope the governor might, the governor might do away with that.
There's a bill.
Is it? Good. They need to do away with that.
For public, for public enemies.
But when we were doing, doing the new city hall, particularly prevailing wage, we had two guys from the union over at Mount Vernon come over and demand to see payroll sheets. So they check it.
They do.
Yep. So that's why I'm here. What would happen next if it goes forward, of course, this, the decision to go forward will be a council decision, and at this point, we're still slowly going forward. Is everybody in agreement that they wanna do this? No. Did I expect everybody to be in agreement? No, I didn't. No, it just doesn't work that way. But one of, one of the things that we have to do sometimes is we have to look at what we think's best for the town, and that doesn't necessarily mean it always goes through, but we, you know, school board, same way, you just do the best you can. That's all you can do. So the next step will be, he'll, he'll do his little engineering thing, and the first of April, we had to submit a general grant application. It's not in detail. And if that's accepted, then we submit the real one with all the tree and all the everything in there. So we're, we're four, five months down the line. We have to have, we have to have a public meeting, public hearing, which SCOCOG will conduct that hearing, it'll be the city hall when we have it. Of course, it'll be announced. And so I'm here to ask for a letter of support and ask you to think about it, and if you have questions, I'd be glad for you to call me anytime or come in city hall.
When would you need that letter of support? When would you need that by?
A week or two. I mean, it's not something I need. I started early, which is, sometimes, like, oh, one of our, one of our senators, they're not gonna just send me a letter of support because I don't have a personal relationship with them, they don't know what the project is, I don't wanna be sure they're gonna support something that's worth it. So I have a form I have to fill out that goes into the office that goes up to somewhere, and then comes back, and then I probably have to submit another request for the letter, and so, you know, it'd probably take me a month and all that. So anyway, I'd like for you to think about it, we might have school support if you feel like you can do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will get back with you after.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the Ava Lord spotlight.
Mrs. Mash, I think you're going to start with Heart of the Hill's food pantry.
I'm recognized Jan Hesterly, can you stand? Jan is the director of our Heart of the Hill's Food Harvest. She has allowed our students in need to come over and shop for clothing. They donated 20 turkeys and food baskets for our students' families this past Thanksgiving. We just want to thank them for always being helpful and giving, and everything they do for our students, our families, and our community. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, many as you like. You wanna get here underneath the, let's go underneath this little thing. You ready? One, two, three.
Ready for our next one? Our next person, it's a district spotlight, we have several of these that we'd like to honor tonight, is our, we chose, the board chose last month to nominate for our local honoree, the Belcher Scholarship to Rachel Taylor. So we'd like to honor you and thank you for submitting your essay, and that will be sent to the next level. You'll receive a $250 scholarship from the school now, and you'll be eligible for more as it moves up the line. So you wrote a great essay, and we just appreciate your interest.
Congratulations. One, two, three.
Thank you. And our next honoree, I think Mr. Mississauga were here, is that correct? Can you stand up, please? We obviously know that Mr. Mississauga do an outstanding job with our middle school and high school bands, and Mississauga, if you would introduce our all-state band selection and talk about her just a little bit.
This is Madison Curtis. Maddie was accepted to play alto clarinet in the all-state band. This is her second year being accepted for this honor. She went up against multiple students, she had to get through the district level, and then audition again to compete at the state level. At the end of January, January 26, 27, 28, she'll be going to Tantera and practicing with students from all across the state all week long there, and then performing on Saturday, I believe, at 12:30 for the performance with the all-state band.
1400, 109 were selected, I believe, is that correct?
Yep.
It's quite an honor, especially doing it twice.
Yeah, thank you.
No, I think that, that's wonderful. I mean, I've, I've heard her playing, and she is very talented, so we'd like to take a picture.
Congratulations.
All right, next, I think we have Coach Swafford and Mr. Sawyer, is that correct?
I'd like to introduce Coach Swafford.
They did a penny drive in the elementary, and it was an amazing thing. The kids had a lot of fun, and then I think the third grade actually went and visited and took the money, so we're proud of that. For the middle school report, I just wanted to thank, we've had a lot of high school National Honor Society members do service projects, and some of those have extended into our middle school. One was they hosted a seventh and eighth grade ugly sweater contest last week and a dance. They partnered with our healthy schools, which is Ann Leonard, Jesse Lehman, and Randy Carville. And then on Monday, for our fifth and sixth graders, they had a day of fun. They played glow-in-the-dark dodgeball and all kinds of funs, fun activities, and just wanna thank them for keeping our kids active and social. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a high school principal, Dr. Nash.
We had three students that ran for student advisor to the Ava Arwin School Board. They were Stephen Copeland, Jada Gunter, and Cameron Lee. And after a week-long of campaign, our students selected Ms. Cameron Lee as a student advisor to the board. She will take over in January. Cameron is the daughter of Crystal Lee and is involved in a lot of activities at the high school.
Cameron, you, you understand you're gonna be required to give your campaign speech at some point in the next 12 months?
I can do that.
Because I heard it was very unique.
It was very unique.
And she got lots of votes just for the speech.
She had an excellent rap campaign speech.
Bring your backup. Cameron, you and I'll meet in January, and I'll run you through, you know, what the activities of the student board member is. We'll find some projects that impact all kids, K-12, that you and I can work together on. I look forward to it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a special services director, Mrs. Swafford.
Hello. This is Ginger Gastineau, our second and third grade special education teacher. In December, won a $500 grant from McDonald's for Active Lifestyle, and she's gonna use that to purchase some sensory things, including a swing for her classroom. So she's very excited about that, and the kids were extremely excited. They're waiting for that, so.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a high school principal, Dr. Nash.
We had three students that ran for student advisor to the Ava Arwin School Board. They were Steven Copeland, Jada Gunter, and Cameron Lee. And after a week-long of campaign, our students selected Ms. Cameron Lee as a student advisor to the board. She will take over in January. Cameron is the daughter of Crystal Lee and is involved in a lot of activities at the high school.
Cameron, you, you understand you're gonna be required to give your campaign speech at some point in the next 12 months?
I can do that.
Because I heard it was very unique.
It was very unique.
And she got lots of votes just for the speech.
She had an excellent rap campaign speech.
Bring your backup. Cameron, you and I'll meet in January, and I'll run you through, you know, what the activities of the student board member is. We'll find some projects that impact all kids, K-12, that you and I can work together on. I look forward to it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a special services director, Mrs. Swafford.
Hello. This is Ginger Gastineau, our second and third grade special education teacher. In December, won a $500 grant from McDonald's for Active Lifestyle, and she's gonna use that to purchase some sensory things, including a swing for her classroom. So she's very excited about that, and the, the kids were extremely excited. They're waiting for that, so.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a maintenance director, Mr. Valentine.
He's got nothing to add. He was feeding cows last time I turned.
All right. Next, we'll start with the administration reports, Dr. Dial.
All right. Couple things I wanna go over, wanna go over, we got our payment, so I didn't get to do this last month, so I just wanna go over finance just a little bit, and then I'm gonna talk about, a little bit about what MSB8 discussed, our new tax bill, we have a tax decrease coming, and really how that ties into schools. So if you go, we've been through July, go all the way over to December. Okay. Our December, still hanging, hanging pretty strong. You'll see our weighted ADA is still 1330. We're going, we've been that way since August, but our SAT has been moving. 6200, 6200, 6199, 6220, 6220, and this month is paying at 6230. So, good for us. You know, you run that band, you take away your, our assessed valuation, and we are $85,000 ahead of budget currently. So we feel very strong about our formula dollars. Last year, we talked a lot about estimating enrollment, 'cause we started estimating enrollment at this time a year ago, which netted us a little, a little over $100,000 last year over anticipated revenue. So our numbers are up in the school district. We have approximately 45 more students than we had a year ago, and we keep track of that on a monthly basis. So we are going to be able to take advantage of estimating enrollment again this year. So I feel very good about it. I have actually entered that data into DESI. We will see the first live payment on that estimated, estimation of enrollment in January, and we'll be able to adjust that as the year goes. But that will take us from ahead of anticipated, anticipated revenue of 85,000. We were, we're gonna estimate for a weighted ADA of 1351, which is 21 kids, and that is splitting the difference, being safe, at 1351. It will net us an additional $215,000. So, Prop C is on target. We've talked about that. That's the 1% sales tax, a little above target, actually. Transportation's pretty level. We're gonna miss that budget by about 12 grand. The governor cut transportation dollars. We know state transportation dollars doesn't pay for a transportation system anyway. It hasn't since 1994, I believe, is the date, is the year. So, we just, we budget an amount that we think we're gonna be close. We're gonna be short $12,000, but we're gonna make up for it in our formula dollars. And if you remember, we had an increase in assessed valuation of a little over 9%. So financially, I feel very comfortable where we're at, at this point today. So let me talk about moving into the future. So, yesterday, the federal government passed a new tax plan, which doubles the standard deduction, which sounds well and good for all of us, except Missouri is tied, the Missouri State Tax Plan is tied to the federal plan. So that is going to double the standard deduction in Missouri as well. So where does most of our tax dollars come from? Income tax. This spring, we already have, if the, if it hits a certain amount, we have a tax cut coming for Missouri already, plus now we are doubling the standard deduction for residents in Missouri. We're gonna see a dramatic increase, or decrease, I'm sorry, in state revenue. If we do not, if the state, if the House and the Senate do not uncouple the state tax plan from the federal plan, which they can do, they said, it's called uncoupling. So it, it brings us back to the previous standard deduction. So they are aware of it. I have yet to see a bill filed, and I get all of those bills. I think to date, I'm a little over, we're probably 115, 120 bills that have been filed directly related to education. We get a copy of those. First day, Mr. Dalton started getting them, he was like, "What is this?" But we respond to those, those ones that we think are, are good and bad for education. We respond to what we think it's gonna cost us. We're one of about 65 districts in the state that gets that. So I spend, I spend quite a bit of time responding to those. They're called fiscal notes. So, I'm a little concerned about that at this point. Right now, looks great, but what's the future going to hold for us? I don't know. So as I get more information, I will let you know. Okay? Oh, one more thing, the board election sign-up, December 12th. Remember, it started 8:00 AM. It ends January 16th at 5:00. Our office will be closed starting Monday through January 1st, so the 25th through January 1st, our office will be closed.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll have Mr. Dial.
Well, as we know, our semester wrapped up and over, students falling for Christmas break. We've got a curriculum review rotation that we worked through. I know our math department went through that first semester, and we'll be moving into some or other departments second semester. Been going through, following up, meeting with some grade-level teams, just meeting with teachers, honestly, just working together as, as they plan, see what, you know, what they need from us to support them as we just move forward, look to second semester, you know, as they're planning for testing. We appreciate the work with the people, and the teachers and students you're putting in.
Thank you. Next, we'll go into discussion and action items. And first on the agenda is the flex plan.
So our flex plan or Section 125 renewal, it's a yearly renewal. It allows teachers and employees to pre-tax health benefits. So it's just something that's an annual renewal. It is my recommendation to renew this, 'cause it is a cost savings for our staff.
Need a motion on that? Okay, so I need a motion to renew the flex plan, Section 125. Michael makes a motion, I have a second. Mark, make a second. Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor? Carries a 7-0. Next, we'll do the year in 2016/17 audit.
Our auditor is KPM. I'm Randall Moots, is our school auditor. He comes in June for a couple days, then he comes back late July and performs a very comprehensive audit of our finances for the 16, 17 school year. Just a couple highlights, our net position increased from 19.69 in reserves to 20.02%. And that's a number that I gave you in August, but it's actually in writing now. We did deficit spend last year, $176,064 versus it was down from their year previous of 198,931. Expect that deficit to be closer to zero for this current year. We got a very clean audit, no findings whatsoever. The only recommendation, and it's the recommendation they have every year, is segregation of duties. Our office is pretty bare bones. We have Mrs. Ray, and we have Mrs. Sterling, and those, and myself, and Mr. Dalton, and Mrs. Sterling's receptionist, who does food service, but really the, the money goes through the four of us. You know, they would like to see more, more people in our office, more segregation of duties. We can afford to hire more people in our office, but Randall says he sees that, and that's his recommendation for every small school district in the state. But it is not, it is not something that we're marked down for, it's just, it's the standard recommendation. So we just need to approve the 16, 17 audit, sir.
Need a motion to approve the 16, 17 audit. Troy makes, makes a motion, running seconds. Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor? Carries a 7-0. Next, we'll do the extracurricular and co-curricular activities review.
Basically, we all had it in front of you on sheet there. I put down numbers of athletes that we have participated in these sports. You have their coaches, how many freshmen we have coming in and so forth. I put records there and so forth. Dr. Nash helped me put together the co-curricular and so forth. And I will tell you, one of the biggest things that I have found there is we have 97% of our student body in the high school participate in something, whether it be a club, an athletics, band, whatever it may be. But 97% of our students participate in something. We've had a phenomenal year so far, you know, from fall, we're working into the winter. It, it's just been a super year for us. You can see that our kids have excelled, our coaches have done a super job, you know? And of course, now we're working into winter time with basketball coming on and so forth, and it's a long winter. Basketball is a long season, okay? Both basketball are girls tomorrow. Mr. Howk or Coach Howk, they go to Walnut Grove and play tomorrow. They're in a Walnut Grove Holiday Tournament this year. And then our boys will play the 26th, the day after Christmas, in the blue and gold. Hey, we got a great draw. We got the sixth seed, which is great, isn't it? Always get the sixth seed, it's great in that tournament. It's kickin'. Imagine that, okay? But anyway, everything is going super. Our kids are participating. You know, I've been around here forever, and I know in our high school building, I'm in the middle school, everything is just flowing very smoothly. It's going excellent. If you have any questions, I'll answer them for you, but I have the numbers and everything there for you. Basically, our numbers are very similar to where we were at last year. We're down in a couple of sports, but then somebody else picked it up in another sport. Questions, anybody? Thank you.
Thank you. So this time, I accept a motion to approve the extracurricular and co-curricular activities review as presented. You have a motion?
Yes, please.
Kenny makes a motion, I have a second. Mark, make a second. Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor? Carries a 7-0. Next, on the agenda is the property casualty liability, work comp insurance review.
We talked in October about the possibility of going out to bid for our property casualty liability and workers' comp. The board directed me to go out to bid on that service. And we have been with Music for a very, very long time. Music has done a great job for us. We're very happy with the coverage we have. We access their coverage when needed. They are quick to pay, quick to take care of us. But, that being said, their premium for the year is $158,000, and that is a January to December 31, January 1 to December 31 premium. We received one other bid for service, and that was from Connell Insurers. They are the agent. They are an agent, they're a reserve public risk, which is also, also a self-funded trust, just like Music. Gallagher Basset is the insurance company behind Music. Midwest Public Risk is the insurance company behind Connell Insurers. Their bid, their initial bid was $150,048. Mr. Connell visited with me last week when he came to turn in his bid. He has talked Midwest Public Risk down to making the premium $145,048, $09, or 18 months. You would, let me take that back. You would pay half of it now, and then you would pay another premium July 1. So, but there, there's no price increase for 18 months. So, questions or thoughts on that? What, how much does Music raise per year usually? It went up $3,000 this year. It was $155,000, now it's $158,000. Am I correct in that statement?
That's the dollar amount of everybody's debt.
Midwest Public Risk is the insurance company behind Connell Insurers. Their bid, their initial bid was $150,048.09. Mr. Connell visited with me last week when he came to turn in his bid. He has talked Midwest Public Risk down to making the premium $145,048.09. It does have a few benefits that Music does not have. It includes our, includes a cyber liability policy free of charge for $2 million. It increases our liability line from 2.7 to 3.7 million. They do have several education seminars that they provide throughout the year. Connell is not near as large as Music. They don't cover near as many school districts, because Music covers 400-plus school districts in the state of Missouri. Connell has about, I think they're up to 15 now. They just started in this market about three or four years ago. I did check their references. Everybody I have talked to is happy with them. The difference between the fiscal year for Midwest Public Risk is different. It's July 1st to June 30. So, instead of doing a six-month, having to get another premium, they are guaranteeing this 145, 145, 048, 09 for 18 months. You would, let me take that back. You would pay half of it now, and then you would pay another premium July 1. So, but there, there's no price increase for 18 months. So, questions or thoughts on that?
What, how much does Music raise per year usually?
It went up $3,000 this year. It was 155, now it's 158. Am I correct in that statement?
That's the dollar amount of everybody's tax.
The people you talked to, how about the other place?
They've seen 1% to 2% increase, so fairly close. Yeah. Midwest Public Risk is a, is a large insurer. Like, much like Music or Gallagher Basset, they insure schools all over the country. They insure government, or city governments, all over the country. You know, Music specializes in school districts, but Midwest Public Risk does also have school districts. So, you're looking at about $13,000 savings. Any claims that we currently have would stay with Music. Anything starting January 1 or forward would move to Midwest Public Risk.
We have a cyber liability policy now.
We did not buy that. I thought we did. We did not buy that a year ago. We increased our liability insurance for an additional cost. The cyber liability is something that we had talked about as we moved 1 to 1. At the high school, we would need to increase, or we would need to purchase, but it is included in this insurance.
What is the cyber liability?
So, if you get a data breach, they, it pays for them to come in. And if you have any liability, if you've given out social security numbers or personal data, and somebody gets that information and charges somebody, that you can be sued for that, that protects us from that.
We don't have that currently.
We do not.
But we will with this new company.
Or we could buy it. It would be an additional coverage with Music. And we, we discussed it last fall, but as we move with more and more computers, that's something we need to add. It'll be a couple thousand dollars than Music, not an exorbitant amount, but... So, it's the choice of the board. You have a known, which is Music. You have an unknown with good references that's been in the, been in the business for a long period. Connell is 45-plus years old, the agency. They have Springfield, Bran, Springfield, Hollister, and Joplin offices. But Midwest Public Risk is a, is a well-known insurer as well. You're going to save $13,000 that, that direction.
Actually, about 15, right?
Yeah. If you bought the cyber, yes, you'd save about 15.
So, what was your opinion talking to this new company?
I'm impressed with them. I, I will tell you, I've known this gentleman for a long, long time. I've never done, I've never done business with him. And he approached the district a couple of years ago, but he really didn't have, he was just starting into the school business. So, he really didn't have any school districts under his belt. Now he does. So, I felt more comfortable listening to him. I never want to be the first person.
There are some other districts that are close by.
Mountain Grove. Mountain Grove uses him. Hollister, I think Forsyth. There's several others. Those are the three that I talked to.
What do you think, insurance man?
You don't want to ask me that. You'd save $13,000 and get more coverage, why would you not?
Yeah.
That's why I bring it to you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to go with the new company. So, we have a motion on the table to go with Connell Insurance for the property casualty liability work comp insurance. Mr. Trump makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Kenny makes a second. Any discussion? Here or none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Carries 7-0. Okay? Next, we'll have the high school teacher Chromebook purchase.
So, as we've talked for the past, since I've been here, so now 14 months, it's my 14th for me. The desire of the school board is to increase technology within our school system. And we've talked extensively about that over the past 14 months. We made significant upgrades in our wireless access points. We have made significant upgrades in our bandwidth. We've gone from 100 to 500. Is that correct, Mr. Dalton? So, our first step in this is we have to train teachers. Before we give it to kids, we really need the teachers to, to know what they're doing. We are 1 to 1 at the 6th grade, and we did that through a grant last spring, and we're very fortunate to have that. And our next step, we believe, is at the high school. We will look at some other areas as we go. So, we have bids. We got bids from three different companies. Our low bid is from CDWG for 40 Chromebooks for $6,840. Mr. Dalton would order those tomorrow. We would have those in place, in, in teachers' hands, within the first week or two of January. Now, I want to say one other thing. As we move this direction, we are going to have to find some help for Mr. Dalton. As we increase equipment with one person, it's pretty difficult. Mr. Dalton and I have a plan, what we've been talking about. We've shared that with Mr. Dalton. It affects Dr. Hall. We've started talking to him as well. So, we'll bring that to you as we move forward, but we do need some more feet on the ground. And you can't, now, we have J-Mark who supports our servers and switches, but just the sheer amount of pieces of equipment. Now, we're going to add 40 today. We added how many with, after school, with Bearsden?
We added 40 with Bearsden last month. And 275 this summer, I need to mention.
Yeah. And now, and then we're going to add over 400 next summer, because you're going to see a request to purchase somewhere in the neighborhood of 450 Chromebooks, hopefully in June.
Plus spare springs.
Yes. So, anyway. But I just want, I want the board to understand, by buying these, we're taking the first step of going 1 to 1.
Okay? Thank you. So, that being said, do I have a motion for the Chromebook purchase? Michael makes a motion, do I have a second? Mark, make a second's the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Carries 7-0.
So, we will take the majority of the equipment, equipment at the high school, that Chromebooks, and we will move that throughout, move it down through K-8, so we will increase their footprint in technology as well. So, because we have good equipment at the high school, but we won't need all of it, because we have several Chromebook carts at the high school that we will move down.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll do item F, which is contract for bus route.
So, I have been approached by a contractor, Mr. Turner, and by a buyer, Mr. Scribner. Mr. Scribner would like to acquire Mr. Turner's bus route number seven of Turner Transportation. They, Turner will still operate one bus route. So, I have given the board some options on, on what they can do with that bus route. So, it's time for discussion and...
Bus number seven.
Route number seven, sir. Runs down Y Highway, at the, towards the end of Y Highway down. He's got some pretty rough ground roads.
I make a motion. We approve the transfer at the, and for him to continue to operate on the old contract.
Okay. So, I have a motion to, for the transfer of the sale from Turner to Mr. Scribner, based on the existing of the old contract that's in place.
That would be an agreement for right to contract and contract to some.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Troy makes a second. Discussion? That is the option one that we were presenting.
Yes, sir.
For the new contract.
Yes, sir.
Here or none, discussion? A call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Two, all those votes note, raise your right hand. Motion fails, five to two. We have two options left that we haven't discussed, Mr. Dalton.
You have two options left that I emailed you today. You have, the first op, the second option would be deny the transfer, approve Wayne Turner to Tommy Scribner. You could obviously, at any point, offer Mr. Turner the buyout, which I doubt he would take. And he could continue operating his bus route in the way it is. Or you could offer Mr. Scribner a three-year contract, a draft that Mr. Minkus has sent us, our school attorney. You could offer that to Mr. Scribner, and he could agree to that. With that, you would have to have a release. That would be part of your motion. You'd have to have a release from Mr. Turner for their agreement to the right to contract. He would have to release his, his right to contract bus route number seven. I have gone over the three-year contract, what it would look like with Mr. Scribner. Mr. Scribner was okay with that, and verbally to me, had agreed to that contract. I did let Mr. Turner know that he would, if that was the option that was taken, that part of the motion, and in order to contract with Mr. Scribner, he would have to release the district from his right to contract. Correct, gentlemen? Did I miss anything?
Do you have, do you have anything to say, Dwayne?
I really, if you'd let me speak, please. I would really like for Mr. Scribner to be able to buy my route, but I do not want to see Mr. Scribner buy this. And just get it paid for in three years, with the possibility of it being taken away from him and not being able, he, all he'll do is get it paid for. And if, if this is the option, I withdraw my sale of route number seven with Turner Transportation. I will not do a man that way.
So, you want to withdraw?
Yeah, I'm withdrawing my sale. Route number seven is not for sale no more, because...
You want, you want to withdraw the approval of the sale?
Right.
With consideration by the board?
Right, because it, Tommy, I'm sorry, you know, but whenever a man, if a man just gets something paid for and it can be taken away from him, I don't do business that way. Because it'll just be at the point. He always, he'll just be living on peanuts, just, he'll just make these payments and keeping the bus up, cars. I've run one of these for 15 years. I know. I know what it takes to run one of these. It's not the most lucrative deal in the world. It's good for me at my age when I bought it. But I cannot sell a man something and at the point, and him not having no security of being able to run it for a few years and make money. Thank you.
This is another motion. Do I have any other motions regarding this issue?
So, is there anything to make a motion to? If he's withdrawing?
There's no action unless there's another motion.
Okay.
No action, no other motion, so we will move on to the next thing. Next, we'll discuss federal program review.
All right, federal program review. Talk a little bit about federal programs. You've heard me talk about what you think of many of these title war funding is what you hear. For us, this year, total federal programs, just over $650,000 is what you're talking about. District proceed. A lot of the criteria is very specific on what that can be used for, what that applies to here for us. Some of the things that we use, some of the federal money for class size reduction, some reading intervention at the elementary level. A lot of tutoring that we do is paid for through federal programs, additional supplies and resources, and even we're able to purchase some extra technology at the elementary middle school this year.
And that last summer.
So, that's, when you talk about federal programs, that's what we're talking about. You know, a lot of it, criteria you go through again. I've talked some about the changes that are coming down this year, moving from no child left behind to every student succeeds. So, a lot of the funding calculations come from census data, poverty level. There's some different, when you get into Title IV, Title V, some of those are based on the population that's considered a rural area. So, that's what some of that funding is that you hear when we're talking about federal programs. Sent out, I think if you're just shy of 500 services, just to get feedback input as we evaluate this program. Some of the strengths of the program, you know, just provides us the ability to offer some services that we wouldn't otherwise be able to. They, it's earmarked to supplement programs that you have in place, you know, to do additional things that you otherwise would not be able to. It's not designed to take the place of something that we're already doing. Some of those programs, again, I've touched on, class size reduction, where you, where the qualified, there's some criteria you have to meet before you can do that. Tutoring interventions, some things like that. And again, funding for additional resources and technology for use in the classroom. Concerns, and honestly, when I sent this out, what I've tried to do something this year, I've tried to coordinate with other events, whether it was kindergarten orientation, just some events where we have lots of parents in buildings to try to meet with those folks and just let them know what's available and what we're doing through those programs. So, that's something I listed, you know, just continuing to look for ways to communicate to the folks what we're able to do and to get that feedback. You know, I sent this information out now and tried to get input from those other activities I'm talking about. I'm building a list. We will have some meetings in the spring, you know, so I'll follow up with, you know, just sending out the emails, posting that information to try to have groups come in and just help us sit down with our plan for next year. So, that's something we want to focus on. Here are concerns, a lot of concerns about funding decreasing, while it seems like our needs and, you know, areas we'd like to address. It seems like those lists continue to get bigger and longer.
And the federal government level, there's, there's talk of decrease in title funds again, which we took a decrease this year.
You know, and I know I've mentioned in previous meetings and some of my reports, you know, where we are. And when I say we collectively in the state with some of the changes on those funding calculations, we're, you know, just until we see what that's going to look like. Just some uncertainty as you look forward. Something we're hoping to be able to plan or to try to do. Again, there's some criteria, you know, we're talking about purchasing, purchasing devices at the high school level. We can't use Title IV for that, but there are some things that we're able to do to assist with some of the technologies we, as we plan for next school year. Any questions on federal programs?
Thank you. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the federal program with the U.S. presented. Do I have a motion? Mark makes a motion. Vernon, seconds. Any discussion? Here or none, all those in favor? 7-0. Next, we'll have the A-plus program review.
A-plus, just a little description of what that is. That's a program available to students in Missouri, graduating seniors. There's some criteria set forth, minimum GPA of 2.5, minimum attendance, and this is cumulative for the four years of high school. So, the 2.5 GPA, attendance of 95% or higher. There's some criteria. What it used to be was just to have a school professional advanced on their EOC and algebra. There are some other ways for them to meet that criteria based on an ACT score along with their GPA. There's kind of a sliding scale there. And then some citizenship criteria outlined for students to qualify for. Most common schools that you hear around here... West Plains, Missouri State West Plains, OTC, those are some of the common schools, but what you, community colleges, some technical programs. And what this is, these students can qualify for, you say just free two years, but that calculation is refigured every year, but basically paying for their tuition for two years in those programs. Again, sent out surveyed students, teachers, parents, to get some feedback on those programs. Strengths of the A-plus program, obviously, it's, it's the opportunity to earn money, to help pay for some training after graduation. Teachers indicated strong incentive for those kids to meet those GPA attendance and citizenship requirements. And then the tutoring program, a great opportunity for students. That was something that was really, really interesting for me to see. Our students, you know, and I had a scale there, strongly agree, that strongly disagree. All of our students, with two, when we're talking specifically about that tutoring program, they felt like they benefited from that. All the two said they strongly agreed. The others two said they agreed with that. You know, I think as the teachers and adults, when we look at that program, we know they're benefiting from that. It was kinda neat for me to see our kids recognize it and, and see that that's something that, you know, they're learning some skills there that will apply whatever it is they go on and do. So that was something the kids really picked up on as a positive. Concerns, is trying to communicate the expectations of that program. You know, we have a sit-down meeting at freshman orientation with all of those students and any of the parents that are here and outline that. Always do a lot of conversations, you know, at the start of the senior year, head and end. Something I've tried to do this year. I'm doing follow-up meetings with sophomores, just revisiting those expectations and where they're at, same thing with those juniors. Same kinda thing I talked about with federal programs. You know, I've initiated some of those contacts now, like to follow up with that in the spring. You know, just make sure, and I think we've done a great job with those students and, you know, making sure they know where they are. I've done a lot of follow-up meetings. We get that information from parents, too, you know, sometimes. Just a little extra encouragement from home, keep that student on track to be able to, you know, to qualify for, because it's a big deal. You know, they may not see it, it's seventeen, eighteen years old, you may not see the potential benefits of that.
There are some four-year universities that give an A-plus kid an automatic scholarship. My doc's gets a fifteen hundred dollar scholarship at Missouri Southern. They don't, they're not an A-plus participating school. Those four-year universities realize, hey, that kid has done some extra stuff, so.
And that is, that's something, it's something to appeal to even more kids. You know, someone said, well, I'm not, you know, gonna go to West Plains or OTC. Hey, there's a lot of four-year schools out there that are doing some kind of recognition, some kind of financial, you know, acknowledgement of what, what those students have put in. 'Cause they probably recognize what they're giving up on, you know, trying to appeal to those students. Some things we're looking at moving forward. Again, trying to communicate that information, students and parents, just so they know exactly what's expected and where those students are at. And I know Dr. Nash, we've talked about it, the high school. Traditionally, we've used that tutoring going to the elementary or middle school, focusing on younger students. She's talking about using some, utilizing some peer tutoring at the high school. And I think that's something that would fit in great with some of our, with our A-plus students, trying to take advantage of that. You know, it'd be a good way for them to be able to log some of those hours. So those are some things we're working on as we look, look forward to, to next year. Any questions on the A-plus program?
Thank you.
At this time, I need a motion to approve the A-plus, A-plus program review. Michael makes a motion. Do I have a second? Kenny seconds. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor? Seven out. That concludes our, everything on our agenda tonight. At this time, I've entertained a motion to adjourn. Our next regular board meeting will be January eighteenth, two thousand eighteen.
It's crazy, isn't it?
Six thirty, and that's important. So made a motion to adjourn.
I have a, I'd like to make a statement if we're, can still get that in on discussion. That'd be all right?
Well, yeah.
Okay, so what we just did tonight with the transportation system, I believe is unlawful, 'cause we entered into an agreement with this district, with these bus drivers, that they have the right to sell that as long as we approve the buyer. And we just now, I don't know what we just did, but I don't think it's right, so we might think about that. You know, we've got, we've got, I've got three campaign promises right here. And some people might wanna read that. All I got to say.
Anybody else have any comments?
I think we, the district discussed it. Did you discuss it with the attorney on whether it was lawful?
I did.
This is the school attorney. According to attorney, thinks that is lawful.
Well, I mean, if there's a problem with interpreting what we did, I mean, there could be, we could be, there could be a lawsuit over it. And it could go to a judge, and they can bring up the past president, vice president, and we can, I mean, it could go to court and they could find out what the intent of that contract was, but I believe they've got full right to it. They've got a right to the contract. And as long as they are selling to somebody that we can approve, we, we approve it and they do it. And we're, right now, what we did tonight is we told him he couldn't sell it the way that we told him he could do when he, when he bought it. He paid for that with his money. That, that right to contract was paid for with money from him. And I believe Mr. Turner has the right to sell it, just like the contract that we entered, entered into with him any way he sees fit, as long as the buyer is approved. I don't know, was, was there a problem with the buyer? If there wasn't, why did we not approve the first original way? Anyone wanna explain that? There's five of those.
Like we thought it would, well, I'll just say, what my opinion, I don't know. What my opinion was is we felt like it would be fair to the district and to the buyer to have a three-year contract to make a fair salary. But then, yeah, they wouldn't have that right to contract.
That's what this whole two-year thing was about. And when you guys answered the questionnaire to the newspaper, you guys knew that. That's, that's what was fought for two years, for them to have a right to their contract.
And, and there's also attorneys that says that's not legal as well. So it's, I mean, this is an interpretation of the law. We have attorneys that, that drew it up for you guys. We have an attorney, you know, a school attorney that drew this up, so I mean, it's an interpretation. Whether you're right or wrong.
They're saying that it's illegal or the contract reads differently.
What this contract that we presented, that was presented to us tonight from Dr. Dial, from our attorney that the school has hired, I don't believe he would have presented that to us if he thought that was illegal.
What's wrong with the old contract? Did the attorney say there's something wrong with it?
The old, I mean, the attorney's opinion?
No, just is it legal or not?
What was the attorney's opinion?
It is legal, because it is signed and dated. It is legal.
And the school entered into that with that person?
Current contract that Mr. Turner has is legal, because it is signed and dated. Now, he has an opinion of it. He has an opinion that you can't own a route. That's his opinion. But the school district did enter into that contract.
So now we're gonna deny?
I'm, I'm just, I'm just...
I'm, I'm, okay. We're gonna start denying him all the sales. Is that right? The school's already sold it to McDonald's. They already have the history.
Offer a three-year contract from the Red Tooth back here? Is that what we're coming to?
It was a three-year contract, but what is?
I make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mark seconds. Any other discussion? Here are none. All those in favor? Seven out.
Gentlemen, I'll stand here and answer all your questions for as long as I am. And I'll answer your questions.
Oh, no, don't get that. You're setting, yeah, here, pay off his contract, make a little money. And in three years, you won't renew his contract. That's how you're gonna get him back. That's the whole purpose of it, of getting rid of the right to contract. You're gonna offer him a three-year contract, he's gonna make a little money, pay off Turner, and then when his three years is up, when it's time for him to have another contract, you're not skipping. Then he's out of the way, you've got nothing to spend. You're gonna stand it down the road, you're gonna put a bus on it, you'll take it over just like that one, two, three years. And that's the way, that's the way you're gonna get out of it, right to contract. Yeah, that's what I learned, man. We got a contract, the school sold McDonald's three routes with the same contract, now you're the one that changed it. They just wanna get rid of that right to contract. Of course, you're wanting to change it to a three-year contract. Otherwise, the contract that's right right now, while he's just, with Scrivener and letting, by Turner to keep going. What you're looking at is what the federal district is to you in three years, not give you a contract and you take over the rest.
What's up?